The solar project in Piscataway, ASV, SSP Gable Associates owner contracted to mobilize the site on Wednesday, December 2nd. A job site meeting took place actually yesterday to define the scope and activities over the next two weeks for that project. Looking at my page, Honeywell International ESIP Phase Two, there is a payment application number five to Honeywell International for continued installation testing approvals in a sum of $260,417. To date, the Woodbridge Campus VRF and package unit installs complete on the sun porch. The BMS grades specifically in Perth Amboy are continuing on a second shift schedule. A lighting knockup, another portion of that ESIP was completed in two selected rooms at Perth Amboy, or an acceptance review period with that. Once approved, that schedule will ramp up with additional work being done on that second shift at that location. This evening, we are appearing before the township of East Brunswick planning board after the run, it's a 7:30 meeting, at least next door. They ask for some information and representatives be available for some concerns or conversation on that addition. Additionally, tonight, for signatory, you have some DLE submissions for the ALIS law, partial roofing replacement, and bathroom projects slated for this upcoming budget cycle. That's all I have right now, other than deviating and going to public portion if I don't make it back. I want to wish everybody a blessed holiday season, Merry Christmas, and a happy new year, just basically, I'll make it back. That completes it. Mr. Mahalke is available here from SSP. If there are any other questions relating to these matters.
Thank you, that explains the thought.
You got it.
You got it. Represent us well.
Appreciate it, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'll be next door, I'll try to make it right back. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's it, alright, we're good. Thank you. I'm going to miss the presentation. Thanks, all.
Thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to just say that our schools are still open. We have had students in our buildings on a cohorting or hybrid learning schedule since September, and we have not had any evidence of any school-based transmission within any of our schools. None of our teachers have had any evidence of any kind of exposure in the schools. So what we've been doing at the school district is observing whenever a family member contacts us, that is student or teacher was in contact with someone who tested positively, the cohort takes a 14-day quarantine, and then they're back at school. So, in the light of talking about what is still happening in our schools, we were lucky enough to have New Jersey 12 here the other day, and they did a piece that aired yesterday.
Yes, sir.
So we wanted to show the board what was on New Jersey 12 about our schools.
Cool year in students and their teachers continue to navigate the difficulties that the pandemic brings, and a group of New Jersey students has a set of unique challenges. News 12 New Jersey's Darlene Melendez has their perspective this morning from Piscataway.
Good morning, Rick. A health pandemic is certainly not conducive for any learning environment, much less the type that relies heavily on hands-on, in-person learning. So here at the Piscataway Vocational School, they have obviously been presented with a unique set of problems, but now almost halfway through the school year, they seem to have figured it out for themselves.
I'm going to add a little bit of fresh mozzarella.
For three hours a day, at least three times a week.
So we have our first one almost coming out.
This is what the inside of this Piscataway Vocational School classroom looks like. There you go. Perfect. Antonia Mestrella is their teacher. In this classroom, though, she is known simply as Chef.
Being with them and having that social interaction, you build connection and bond that you can't do over the internet.
As schools across New Jersey and across the nation continue navigating through the pandemic, the students of Piscataway Vocational School are divided into cohorts, broken up by their VOTAC elections.
So are cohorted, so they're only, they're together. So if we had a situation where it was a student in this classroom, we would know, we would, you know, we'd have to quarantine that classroom. So it makes it a lot easier because they're not intermingling.
Nicole Slade, the principal, has watched this year as her students and teachers have done everything to make this process work.
When you can smell it, feel it, and taste it versus on a computer, you know, from a teacher explaining it through a video, it's completely different.
A few students are still virtual, following along in a livestream.
Morning, Stephanie.
But to make this work, students have to stick within their designated cohorts, wear masks, and act responsibly outside of school.
Because they don't want their class to be shut down. So it's very important for them because they want to be not only in here learning, but to interact with each other. And they know the best way for them to learn is in here.
Now, since students and teachers are staying within their cohorts, it makes contact tracing that much easier for the school. And it also is helpful that they are only part-time in the classroom for those VOTAC classes that they elect to take. Everything else for general education, so like math, English, science, that is all done virtually. So here at this school, they have taken that hybrid learning approach. We're in Piscataway. Darlene Melendez, New 12 New Jersey.
I just wanted to share a little bit more. I know that some board members that are here are well familiar with our practices and our quarantining, but we just wanted to give you another one of the lessons going on in the schools. So our plan is to continue to remain open unless circumstances change, and we're looking to develop a phase-back plan for the spring as things improve in New Jersey and in Osex County. We expect to phase back into more in-person instruction. So. Under my personnel recommendations, I'm recommending Kathleen Hanning, who's been a long-term employee in the district here, submitted her resignation. She plans to retire, Jim Kerrieth. I'm recommending also that the board accept a resignation of Maria Monte. She's a clerk at Piscataway Campus, and she is also planning to retire in September, but she wanted to give us good notice about her plans. Cindy Crackish has also submitted her resignation. She also plans to retire. She's an administrative assistant to the Director of Restructural Services here in the central office. Laurie Carney, she is the administrative assistant to the Director of Personnel, and she is resigning because of family issues. She's relocating in the state. So she has been a really stellar person in the district, and we're all going to miss her in particular, Mr. Johnson, I think, will be missing her. Emily Capple, I'm recommending that she be appointed to the position of administrative assistant to the Director of Restructural Services. Her salary is listed there for the board's review, and she would be replacing Cindy Crackish. Maribel Martins, I'm recommending that she be appointed to the position of administrative assistant to the Director of Personnel. Her salary is there for the board's review, and she would be replacing Flirt Carney. Liz Osario, I'm recommending that she be appointed to the temporary position of teacher cosentology at Piscataway Campus. Her salary is listed there for the board's review. She's replacing a cosentology instructor who is on an illness. Robert Ostrov, I'm recommending that he be appointed a temporary teacher of social studies here in East Brunswick Campus, covering for teachers that are on maternity. And finally, Antoinette Fariga, teacher of English, recommending she be transferred back from the Edison Academy to the East Brunswick Career Development School, also covering for a teacher on maternity. Next, the board may recall that we got approval to institute cultural diversity clubs in the district, so now I'm recommending the following teachers be appointed as the class advisors or club advisors for those new organizations, as well as a student council advisor for Piscataway and a yearbook advisor for the Piscataway School. Next, I'm recommending to the board that we employ an additional tutor, Peggy Tombrowski, who is a teacher at the Piscataway Campus, at the rate listed there for your review. This Saturday, we are going to be administering our admissions exam at the Woodbridge School and the Edison School. This is our online exam for the first time, so I have to thank Mr. Bisco for spearheading the creation of an online admissions exam. In this climate, it's not possible to have 400 students in one facility or state. So the staff of willing disciples or for the vendor to create an online test. In order to supervise potentially 700 students taking an online test, we need an additional group of online proctors. So that's why the lengthy list of teachers, we're going to dial into the administration for exam to proctor the exam virtually. So it's a very competitive situation for the kids, and because they're taking it from home, we need to have a lot of eyes on what the teacher's doing. So that's why we have that list of proctors here for your review. Next, the adult education program at the correction center, I'm recommending that it be continued. We've done this for over years. It's an important service to the inmates over there, and you can see that Miss Lisa DeLeo, I'm recommending she be reappointed as a teacher over there. Next, we have had difficulty replacing our learning consultant who's retiring, and we are not able to find a qualified applicant. So I'm asking the board to approve us to allow the services commission to do some evaluations to make up in the short form of job search here during interim period until we find a replacement. Next, we have some requests for maternity leave. I mentioned before, we're recommending several temporary teachers to cover for these maternity leaves. So these are positive things, maybe even more. We're also asking for a slight change in one of our administrative assistants' childcare leave. And that concludes my personnel recommendations for.
Question, do you know the participants we have in the MA program?
I don't know, but I can find out.
Thank you.
Sure.
I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Arnesky.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
What goes?
Thank you. Next, I have listened to the board's review, the highlights from all the schools, and I'm happy to continue to underline the fact that we do have highlights. There are extracurricular activities, there are service activities going on. Our students have been active. We have held our Honor Society induction ceremony virtually. So our teachers and our students are doing their very best to keep the school community rich and lively. Next, I listed there for the board to review the accomplishments of our soccer players and our coach. We were awarded the sportsmanship award at the Perth Amboy School, Coach of the Year is Miss Nolte over at the Edison Academy. Piscataway won the GMC All-Conference, or I'm sorry, that student was a player in the All-Conference team, and we have listed here all of our awards for students who participated in soccer under some very challenging conditions this year. Next, I'm recommending that the board reapprove our motorcycle rider safety program. This is on a course over at Piscataway Campus. It was one of the first programs we reinstated after the closure of the public schools because it's an outdoor course, but we've been running this course for this organization for years. It's been, I think, a nice community service that we offer in it. Next, I have the basketball schedules. Mr. PDR, Athletic Director, had to reconfigure the basketball schedules when the season was delayed. So this is our next, next week at the basketball schedules. We are still hopefully anticipating basketball season this year. It's supposed to start in January. And so that is all this for your review. And then, next up, I'm going to ask Mr. Bisco to present to the board the school safety and security plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Blue. Every year annually, we have to review our school safety and security plan and submit it to the county superintendent's office for approval. Last month, we met with our, our security team, and we went over our plan. It's very similar to previous years, except this year we added a sixth section, which is all about the pandemic plan. So, section one of the school safety and security plan really deals with the master schedule, staff rosters, where all this information is located in the case of an emergency. Section two is about responsibility, the responsibility of each school's security team, and to review their procedures together, the chain of command. Something happens, they need to know who to go to in order for them to deal with these situations. Section three is target hardening initiatives. That pretty much decides our, describes our visitor policy, our contractor signed-in policy, making sure that our food deliveries are secure once they come off the truck and into the school. And really, a very important one is where our facility location shut-offs are in case there was an emergency. All the ministries in the building need to know where those emergency shut-offs are. Section four is all of our policies regarding safety and security, and those are updated as needed. Section five talks about prevention, our head training that we do every year, our security training that we do every year, and all of the drills that we have to do. This year has been a little challenging with drills because each cohort has to have their own drills, so instead of two drills a month, we're doing four a month. The more drills we do, the better we are prepared in case a situation happens. And finally, section six, the new section, we decided to add our district pandemic plan. And that is pretty much our school safety plan.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that our staff is continuing to protect safety given the conditions in which we operate. With the cohorting, that requires us to do safety drills for each cohort of students in the building unless we have double, double practice, which means we're really good at it. Next, for the board to view and recording our fire drills that we held and the dates thereof, and as well, our district security drills are listed here, and you can see there are many, we did great, so we are prepared. And finally, the dates to remember are listed, including the working ends are already up in here, and these terms are included in our report.
Thank you. I have a question, but I think I answered it already. Along the lines of the MA program, and the way we are coordinating with the county for marketing, figuring out a way we can put together some bullets or talking points on the work that we do, and in those regards to also highlight that the district is doing his work, I think it's critical work, to be praised, or should at least be noticed.
I agree. There are people who really need their life out from the ground, so.
Thank you. Alright, I need a motion to approve the remainder of the superintendent's report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have now come to the public portion of the meeting. If anybody has anything to bring to the board, we ask for your names, dress.
Yes. Yeah, I took off my mask, I need to be able to be, is that okay? Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay. I still have not mastered how to not follow up on a glass.
I know, it's difficult.
First of all, I'm sorry. My apologies because of me and my family for coming in a little late and disrupting your meeting. We were under the impression that it was your authority, and so we had a long way to walk in, and so we were chatting in the hallway. My name is Carmen Taveras, and I want to express in advance my appreciation for, for your time and for your attention. My family and I have been members of the East Brunswick community for, for the past 15 years. My purpose for coming before you today is to issue a formal complaint regarding the practices implemented in the practical nursing program, as well as to serve as my daughter's advocate, Isabel Taveras, who is a current student there. My intention is to first provide background information for your insight in our current position while highlighting relevant and specific details. My primary goal is to encourage reflection for you all today regarding the practices that are currently implemented in, in this program. I am hopeful that it will also mobilize the proper individuals to bring about corrective actions and resolution on my daughter's behalf, and that of other students who are also experiencing very, very similar issues. Accompanying me today is my family, including my daughter Isabella, and Ingrid Plonk, who is an alumnus of the 2020 class, who I will also be inviting onto this platform to share some of their experiences as well. A little background information, Isabella enrolled in the practical nursing program last spring, and she is entering now what is considered to be her senior year this, this coming February. Her educational experience had been positive until this previous semester, at which point a formal letter shedding light on areas of concern was presented to the director of this program, the superintendent, as well as the board president. The response to these concerns is really what brings me before you today. I will now invite my daughter Isabella to share light, to shed light on some of these concerns, which is really what propelled me to engage the parties previously mentioned, and after they're, they're, they share these concerns, she shares these concerns, I will be more than happy to share why I was unhappy with the responses, as well as Ingrid will share her experiences, because together, this is what brings me to you today.
Hi, I'm Isabella Taveras, and I am a current student at the LPN program in Piscataway Vocational Technical School. I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity to have the conversation, and I hope this is not constructed as a personal attack on my teacher, Ms. Anderson, but more as a way of advocating for myself as a learner. I know that this experience is pushing me to grow and preparing me for situations that I may encounter, not only in my future as, my future role as a nurse, but as a human in general. I will now highlight my concerns, which I recently shared with Mrs. Holder. One major concern is how she treats me. She is condescending and speaks to me like I'm inferior. During a clinical session, she revealed confidential information by announcing that I was failing clinical in front of my peers. As you can imagine, this was humiliating. During our meeting this past week, she said that she intentionally did this so that others can learn from my mistakes. Her demeanor and approach cause high levels of, of stress and anxiety. It is such a hostile environment that I can't even think clearly. I feel like I can't ask questions since her usual responses are, "I don't know, you tell me, figure it out," and I'm not answering that question. While I welcome challenges because I recognize that outcome is always growth, I will not tolerate being humiliated. Such should not be accepted as a normal part of this process, a concept that has been repeated in both meetings with Mrs. Holder and Ms. A. My next major concern is the lack of guidance and opportunity, excuse me, for growth. Instructions are often vague, and she fails to provide adequate feedback to support ongoing learning and improvement. The only feedback I get is from my charting, but it's not specific to the clinical process itself. If I don't get specific feedback, how am I supposed to improve for the next clinical day? I should be provided with daily feedback so I know exactly what I need to improve on. Instead, Ms. A relies on constantly testing without really teaching. I leave her class feeling confused and feeling discouraged. She causes me to question my intellectual ability and even to consider whether or not I should, I should continue my studies in this program. At the end of my meeting with Mrs. Holder, there was a sense of relief because I had an opportunity to express my concerns, but at the same time, I didn't feel like much was accomplished. A lot of emphasis was placed on the fact that my mom wrote this letter, and I find it incredibly unfair because it should not make any of these concerns less valid. I was basically reprimanded for allowing my mom to write a letter, and was told I had to advocate for myself. Comments such as, "Ms. A is feeling very unappreciated, and she works very hard to make these clinical days successful," makes me feel like my feelings were completely disregarded. Not once were my feelings validated, nor was there acknowledgement that such treatment by an instructor was not deemed acceptable. Mrs. Holder scheduled a follow-up meeting just yesterday with Ms. A and Mrs. E, who was one of my instructors last semester. I thought the purpose of this meeting was to work on some kind of resolution. Instead, this meeting was another platform for me to be further reprimanded and further belittled by Ms. A. It was just another opportunity for blame to be placed on me. Conversations focused on Ms. A refuting all of the concerns that I previously brought up with Mrs. Holder. Ms. A stated that I had not shown any growth from the beginning to the end of class, that I lacked confidence, I was unprofessional for allowing my mother to write a letter to the board, and that I was too sensitive and needed to grow thicker skin. How can a teacher who actually cares make such a comment? At one point, she referred to the incident where I ended up crying during clinicals after she publicly humiliated me. Her response was that she could have let me stay in the class and continue to cry in front of everyone, but instead, she allowed me to go to the bathroom to get myself together. She implied that I should be very grateful that she allowed me to do that, and went on to say that she couldn't leave other students to console me. I guess this is Ms. A's way of saying that she is compassionate and sympathetic. She also justified her decision to tell me I was failing in front of, in front of my peers by explaining that there is no privacy in that room to have a conversation about my grades. The meeting finally ended with Ms. A advising me, "Let's put this all behind us, and Isabella, leave your mom out of this." While this journey has been a difficult one for me, including standing before you tonight, I embrace this opportunity as a learning experience. I am passionate about this career path so, so much that I quit my job. I don't have a social life because I'm fully committed to my studies. I just want to make it very clear that I do not need any special treatment. However, I do demand to be treated with respect and dignity, and to be provided with an academic environment that nurtures my growth and development. Once again, thank you all for the opportunity to bring these concerns before you today.
Thank you.
I have a question. What, Mr. Anderson teaches what class?
Excuse me.
Which part of it? Of Mr. Anderson teaches what part of the LPN?
Oh, um, pharmacology and psychology.
Thank you. I'm also going to take my mask off. My name is Ingrid, and I'm Isabella's cousin. I graduated February of 2020, and I was the valedictorian of my class. I worked very hard to maintain a high GPA. I moved from New York, sorry I get emotional, to become a nurse. My dream. I'm 33 years old, and my cousin is 19. You can understand the challenge and the opportunity that this program gives minorities, young adults, and mothers who want to continue on to have a better life. But I knew before starting Ms. Anderson's class that I had to prepare myself mentally and emotionally for what was coming. She had built a reputation for herself for being harsh, for having a condescending attitude, and for treating us all as if being an LPN was the bottom of the totem pole. I knew that that was going to be my lowest grade, and that was already challenging because I had challenged myself enough to come to this program and prove to myself that I can do it. It's very hard to describe Ms. Anderson's demeanor. We all know how important communication is, right? So I can say one thing to you with one like body language and say the same thing and come off completely wrong. This is one of Ms. Anderson's tactics. She speaks to you as if you are worthless. I'm going to describe one day, a specific day that stood out to me. I was at clinical rotation in the dementia unit giving medication. You can imagine as a first-time nurse giving medication how scary it is. You don't know if you're going to overdose your patient. This is your first time, you want to make sure that you're doing everything perfect. I realized that on the list of the medication, there was one that I wasn't familiar with, and I took this as an opportunity to learn, right? I'm in school, this is why I'm here, and I made the mistake of asking Ms. Anderson, "How and when would I give this medication?" And that entire experience turned into her belittling me and questioning me whether I knew why, why, why I was even there, if I was a good enough nurse, and the whole experience just turned on how I didn't know that medication. Not once did she say, "Good job," she made me question myself whether I was capable of giving this medication or not. or I was going to possibly kill my patient. And from that moment forward, she set a tone for our clinical rotation, which was, "Don't ask Ms. Anderson a question." Even if we didn't know, we preferred to just do it, ask each other, but the fear of going through her, just to not feel to be belittled, was so... I don't even know how to describe it. And that was the atmosphere throughout our entire clinical rotation. I actually have a few testimonies from my classmates, who couldn't come today because of the pandemic. And I wanna call Teresa Anagio, who also received an award during ceremony. She said she personally did not feel well in class. She had stomach ache, stress, and anxiety. This is a woman who was a nurse for twenty years back home. A mother of a teenager. A woman who's close to fifty. To have a teacher make you feel like that, it's not because Isabella's nineteen years old. This is what she does, this is how she feels she's teaching us. I, it's really hard for me to understand, as a nurse, where she's supposed to be empathetic, kind, loving, and nurturing. And this is the opposite of that. And if you reach out to a lot of the alumni before me and after me, this is the experience as soon as you enter this classroom. And this is not a representation of every other teacher. This is just Ms. Anderson. And it's sad to say that Teresa handed this complaint before we graduated, and Isabella's there almost a year later, still experiencing the same thing. And that I personally know of someone who had to leave the program because it was too much for her to tolerate. And that is, oh, thank you so much.
These testimonies demonstrate the reprehensible conduct of an educator who has been tasked with nurturing the minds of future generations. They evidence an established pattern of behavior that has been ignored or inadequately addressed by this institution. Bullying and intimidating tactics from an educator result in a stifling classroom environment that not only impedes the learning process, but systematically dismantles the spirits of our students. I have seen my daughter's confidence go from here to here. I have witnessed that every single day. And I have to work hard, and my family has to work hard, to continue to build that. And I will not allow one person to destroy that. And I am sure that if it was your child, or your child, or your child, you would do exactly the same. And to have my daughter be reprimanded, because I choose to advocate for her, because I choose to support her to become an advocate? We all need advocates, right? We all need a colleague, someone who stands by us and say, "Hey, this is what you can do. Let me help you, let me support you." A nineteen-year-old, just because she's in an adult program, does not mean that she's an adult. And we know that as parents, right? This educator has been empowered to implement an instructional approach that operates under this philosophy of testing students' measure of performance without necessarily teaching them. A better approach would be teaching students and engaging them in the learning process by providing adequate feedback, allowing opportunities for growth, and at that point, utilizing assessment tools to measure the mastery of skills. In essence, there is a failure to implement research-based practices that ensure a successful academic experience for all learners. What are some corrective actions? I humbly, I humbly recommend some corrective actions. After sharing these concerns, it was quite disheartening. All of these concerns, after sharing them, it was quite disheartening to receive a response informing me there were procedures in place and a protocol to follow. However, it has been Isabella and Ingrid's experience, as you heard, that those procedures have been poorly executed and proven to be ineffective. Both responses to myself and my daughter throughout this process have been dismissive, and in my opinion, inadequate at best. Policies and protocols should never, ever take the place of the needs of human beings. I am left perplexed, and in disbelief, that an educator with the capacity to inspire and empower our learners consistently demoralizes her students. I urge this board to reexamine current procedures and its effectiveness in regard to addressing student concerns. As you can see, countless students have brought forth concerns regarding this single instructor. Yet her transgression exists. At what point is it determined that there is a serious problem? Two complaints, five, seven, ten? If you are completely unaware of these complaints, then isn't this indicative of a dysfunctional system? How is a teacher misconduct, how is teacher misconduct addressed? Or better yet, is it addressed at all? How is the teacher's effectiveness measured? And what are the standards by which they are held accountable? The true measure of success is not quantitative data that is evident in test scores or grades. My daughter received an eighty-five in Ms. A's class. So although her statements, "You are failing this clinical, and you are failing," she ended up with an eighty-five. But what does that eighty-five really mean? What did she learn? Yet in the meeting that she had yesterday, Ms. A said to her, "You may do no growth. From the beginning of this class to the end, I see no growth." Will this class be viewed as a ritualistic experience that was based on completion of the course? Or will it be a bridge and a springboard for students to use knowledge they have gleaned as arsenal that will be used later in their life and in their career journey? The practice of teaching is exactly that. It's practice, practice, and practice, also reflection. It is an evolving discipline that requiring us to unmask ourselves, our personal egos for the sake of our learners. Who better than our students to measure our effectiveness and to support us in the refinement of our own practice? Having said that, I encourage this board to consider the use of student surveys as part of the evaluation process. Along the same lines and in recognition of the power of student feedback, I also ask and invite you... I'm sorry, I also ask you to invite previous graduates to participate in the process, as you heard Ingrid, right? East Brunswick High School currently puts this into practice by inviting members of the graduating class to speak with counselors regarding the first year of college and their level of preparation. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to express ourselves on a matter that I'm sure you can tell is tugging at my heartstrings. Again, my purpose to date is not to embark on a personal attack on anyone, not one single individual, because that leads to nowhere. It is more as an opportunity for this board to be reflective on the vision and current practice of the program. Given the current pandemic and the shortage and high demand for healthcare professionals, now more than ever, it is important to ensure that the next generation of healthcare professionals have the knowledge and skillset necessary to address the needs of our nation. I trust the board recognizes the value of these comments and the importance of our interest. And I hope we have ignited legitimate interest in the actions of this board. I thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, you can always reach out. You know, I'm very open to having dialogue. I'm an educator myself. I've been an educator for twenty-five years in special education. I believe in the equity of learning for all learners, regardless whether you have learning disability, regardless of what it is, we are all learners. We all have the right, right, to that equity. And so, education is my passion. Whether it's kindergarten, whether it's fifth grade, whether it's college, teaching is teaching, and the learning process does not change. It should not matter what grade you were in. The learning process remains the same for everyone. Best practices remain the same for everyone, regardless. Best practices don't change. We don't use the emotional filters. When the emotional filters are high, and there's anxiety, and that's high, you can't think. That doesn't change. And so, again, I thank you for your time, and I hope that... I hope for the sake of not just my daughter, but just all, just learning, right? In the interest of education, that some changes are made for the improvement of the program and for the betterment of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I respond, we have a board member, Anderson, on the line, if you have any questions.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate those comments and statements I was unaware of that's going on, of any type of issues or problems with our nursing program. I would like to look at the comments, if they can be made available to us, so that our, you know, our board can discuss and look into some of the accusations that are being made.
Thank you.
Isabella, do you mind if I ask you a question, directly? I realize that you're nineteen, but that doesn't necessarily mean you don't want your mom advocating for you, so don't even feel like that for a second. That was a wrong thing to do, I'm a mom, so I get it. Without naming any names, are there other students? I'm only asking this because you're present. You mentioned that she had other students that had an issue as well. Are there other students within your current program that are also having issues that you're aware of?
Yes. I'm sorry, I wanna add to that. It's also the fear, when you finish the LPN program, you wanna continue on to your RN program and get a job. And you know that you kinda have to continue to have a good relationship with your educators, because they need to provide these references. The fear of losing that has made a lot of us not even want to complain. We just say, "Hey, I'm gonna finish this class and get out of here, and not deal with this anymore." Like, I thought about it today, I still have to go pick up my diploma, but I know it's just unfair, and something has to be done.
Isabella, I think a lot of you have gotten up there and saying something, so I do appreciate it, of course, your mom for coming forward, and it's something that I definitely wanna have a more further conversation with her.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, who should I email with these comments? Or, I don't know, I have hard copies, but we sort of wrote all over them, I don't know.
That's fine, thank you. Send it to the superintendent or to the business administrator.
I'm sorry.
The business administrator or to the superintendent?
Okay, we'll do, we'll do. I'll send digital copies, okay?
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
So I just wanna say thank you to all three of you, Isabella, Ingrid, Mom, I didn't catch your name.
Carmen, Carmen Taveras.
Thank you, I thank you for coming out tonight. And one cold weather, two little pandemic, and three mostly concerns. Takes courage, takes an admiration and passion. I've endured the same experience in high school, so I know the good way. And outside of equity for all students, it should be simply about respect. These are not kids, these are young adults. And no matter who is teaching, if everything he says is valid, there should be just a mutual respect in the way we handle things. I have literally fifteen questions. What I will do in the absence of seeing if the documents is, I will wait to receive it from...
Sure. Would you like a copy of her concerns, or...
Yes, so, a couple of questions. Let's see how fast we can get through them. If you don't have the answers now, then don't worry about it. One, I would like to know, who did you receive the response from? In terms of the process, and when did you receive it?
Um, I sent an email to, honestly, the director, Dawn Listad, I believe. ICC, the superintendent, and I believe the president of the board.
Miss Lee.
Okay, so ICC, but it was directed that the letter was addressed to Ms. Listad. After the initial letter, a few days later, her response was that there were, "Thank you for your concerns, but there are procedures and protocols to follow," and that Ms. Holder was going to get in touch with Isabella to establish a meeting. That happened about a week later, and Isabella met with Ms. Holder. Ahead of time, Isabella put a list of the same concerns that she shared with you today, so that Ms. Holder had them ahead of time. They had a conversation, and Ms. Holder suggested that they meet with Ms. A as well. And at that time, Isabella was not comfortable with just meeting with both of them. And so, Ms. E, one of her previous instructors, also met with them, and that meeting took place yesterday. So both meetings have taken place, maybe within along these two weeks, last week and this week.
Okay, okay, so I was trying to get a timeframe on exactly when this was due. All right, that's good to know. I'll stop there, and I'll review whatever it is we received. And I say on behalf of the board, we are committed to make it as right. Not only for you, but for alumni, as well as future students and present students in the program.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayos. Name of that guy.
Yes, sir. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, leather New Brunswick today. A few questions tonight I wanted to ask. First of all, there's still a vacancy on the board, is that correct? One of the seats is vacant?
Correct.
Okay, and who's responsible for filling the seat? And how long has it been vacant?
Freehold Board.
Freehold Board is responsible. It's been vacant since November of last year.
Thank you. So I presume the right way for someone to apply is to reach out to the Freehold Board?
I don't know if it's the right way, but that's the preferred way. They would have a better answer for you.
Fair enough. I did see, so first of all, I also had the same experience of trying to find a meeting in the auditorium. The agenda wasn't clear about what room it was in, so I'm sorry I was late. I might have missed whoever the first person here was speaking. There's an item on your agenda for a sale of surplus property. Can you tell me what property that is, who you're selling it to, and how much, and why?
I'll take that. Surplus property is really something that has to be done, advertised for, and done through a service. So it's basically miscellaneous items. Just not high-value targets.
Not real estate?
Yeah, no, 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 no. We're talking about kitchen equipment, old computers, things like that. They're advertised in a newspaper and then put out on the internet for bid, an auction.
Thanks, you just wanted to make sure you're not selling land.
Oh, no, 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 nothing of any real value. Just trying to get a few bucks for some old stuff.
Fair enough. Well, best of luck with that. You know, the reason I'm watchful over that in particular is because I'm concerned about the Lincoln Addicts in New Brunswick, where the New Brunswick Board of Ed is trying to, you know, offload that school, sell that school, to build a cancer institute. And this entity is now involved in that, because the county is granting twenty-five million dollars to the developer of this new cancer facility on the assumption that the students of this district would be able to enjoy that, you know, to somehow benefit from that new facility. But, you know, I've been watching it very closely, attending planning board meetings, and there was no classroom space in the building, there's no... You know, the folks who designed it did not account for this kind of thing. So I'm really, you know, still curious about what that twenty-five million dollars really is going to. And if, you know, if there's any updates since the last time I asked. I know you're obviously familiar with the project, and maybe... I know you're obviously familiar with the project, and maybe there's something I don't know that you can tell me about.
If it's, if it's the freeholder appropriation, we don't appropriate funds. So it's not our money. You'll have to dress up to the freeholders.
Okay. But, but they, they, they did invoke this entity, and the, the county college in particular said, you know, this, we're gonna give them twenty-five million because they're going to use the facility to somehow benefit the students here and-
Do you have a question about what they said you should ask?
I, well, I'm really here fact-checking what they're saying, and it seems like there's not really a check. There's not really, uh, you know-
If there's something that was discussed off the record, it would remain off the record until such times as it becomes full of knowledge.
Well, I don't know why anything would be off the record. This was approved in an open session of the Freeholder Board.
No, you're talking about appropriations and involvement of this Board of Education in some program that hasn't yet occurred because the building hasn't been acquired or built. So it's only in the discussion stage, which would have been off the record.
Well, there is a signed executed contract.
We have nothing to do with the contract.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I just, it would be-
You're asking questions that this board doesn't have the ability to answer. And I don't know why you're doing that. You're recording it, and it seems as if you're trying to get an answer. You're not trying, you're trying to avoid getting an answer, but it's asking the wrong people. Ask the freeholders your question.
Okay. Well, the freeholders told me it was gonna benefit the students of this district, and so I'm checking with the-
And ask them why they said that.
The board members.
Ask them why they said that.
Okay. I, I, I will. I will. I'll tell them.
You should, you should have done it before you came here.
Okay. Well, with all due respect, I, you know, it's, uh, it's my right to, to come here and to speak and ask questions.
Certainly is. Certainly is.
So, thank you. Thank you for that. And, um, glad you're not selling any land. Wish, wish everybody a very happy holiday. And thank you to, to all the, the people who work hard to make this, this district work. Thank you.
Any questions? Anybody else? Seeing none? Motion to approve- Call the portion? Now, roll call, please. About a second, please? I'm moving. Will you give a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Arness?
Yes.
Ms. Rans?
Yes.
All right. Time for resolutions.
Oh, you bet. Uh, we have A through E. And F through O.
All right. Need a motion to approve resolutions, A through E.
Oh, about a second.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Arness?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve, uh, balance, F through O. I'll, I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Arness?
Yes.
Ms. Rans?
Yes.
Great. Anything more?
Um, if you have something, you might as well personnel it and propose it.
All right. I need a motion to go to closed session.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Ms. Arness?
Yes.
Ms. Rans?
Yes.
Can you tell me, is there gonna be any action after the session?
No.
No? Okay.
Just, just adjourn.
Okay. Well, I'll, uh, I'll pack up then.